Good evening. The November the 15th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the City of Longview, is now called to order. We'd like to welcome a new member of the commission, Commissioner David Holloway. If you'd raise your hand so everybody can get to know you here. We appreciate you being on the commission. So I think we have a full staff now. At this time, I'm going to ask everyone to please stand for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge by Chad Harkey. Commissioner?
Please bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, and just thank you so much for allowing us to come here and make decisions on behalf of the city. Father, we pray that we are good stewards of those decisions and that you just be with us as we do so and just be with all of us throughout this week, Father, and just keep us healthy and safe. In your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. The next item is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting in October. Have all the commissioners had time to look over them? If so, are there any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We now have reached the citizen comment portion of our meeting. These are comments made other than the public hearing. We do have someone who filled out a card for the citizen comment portion of it. If that person come forward to the mic and state your name.
Were you for a zoning item or for...
It's just citizen comment.
Zoning.
Oh, okay. This is just citizen comment.
No, this is citizen comment. Deidra Beckworth. There you are.
I've dealt with mental illness most of my life. I wanted to say, come up here and say that. And in case anything goes bad, yours. And there was some T-shirts that were sold for $20 that had taken something back in. I was actually proud of the T-shirts that I used to represent here in Longview. And I also made a public report about, you know, just fully awareness. I don't know if y'all aware of that or not, though. But anyway, I wanted to say that. I want to stand and say that today.
Did you hear what she said?
Yes.
Thank you for your comment. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We're now on it. The items of the consent agenda are plaits to meet the requirement of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless a member of the commission has a reason to pull that item and would like to discuss it. Is there anyone that would like this item pulled for further discussion? I'll now entertain a motion for approval of consent item.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Does pass. Now on to the regular agenda. The purpose of this meeting is to hear any pertinent testimony concerning those in support of or those who are in opposition of any of the application before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The city council will also hear it on anything that passes. The procedure for the public hearing to be followed tonight will be, first of all, we'll have the staff that will tell us what it's about, the applicant, the general public. If you're part of a large group, I notice that several of you are going to be speaking on the same item, item number D. I wish that you would please get a spokesman to, if you can, get a spokesman to kind of summarize what you're going to be talking about. This will save us a lot of time. When all sides have spoken, then the public hearing will be closed. No further discussion will be entertained. And after the public hearing is closed, then the commission will vote on the request. Okay? We will go to regular item B. Angela, if you'll read the caption and explain it, please.
Yes, sir. Consider application RP 22-09, Bowen addition, filed by The Tide is High LLC to replat approximately 4.091 acres of lots 3 through 11, portions of lots 15 and 16, Block 1, and portions of Lot 2 through 7 and 10 through 4, Block 2, into three lots located at 2430 South High Street. The applicant is requesting to replat approximately five acres into three separate tracks. The applicant actually did provide staff with a letter of credit, so all, you know, so the plat does, the replat does meet all of our requirements and staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have a question of Angela? Okay, is the applicant present? If you'll come to the mic, please state your name.
Mark Lane, 486 West Loop, 571 South, Henderson, Texas. And representing The Tide is High, I work for Johnson &amp; Pace. And I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Do you have questions of the applicant commissioners? I see none. So I'll now open the public hearing. You may be seated unless we need you again. Is there anyone in support of this request? If so, if you'll come to the mic at this time? I see none. Are there any in opposition to the request? If you'll come to the microphone at this time? I see none on that. Do you have any additional questions or comments, commissioners? If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Making a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Does pass. We'll move to item C of the regular agenda. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application S 22-10, filed by Matt McKinney, requesting a specific use permit to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window in General Retail zoning district for Lot 1C-1, Block 2, Hickory Ridge Apartments and Corporate Center Phase 1, located at 2002 Toller Road. So the applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through window in General Retail. A SUP is required to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. To the west of this site and to the north of this site, there is both restaurants with existing restaurants with drive-through windows. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from any of the commissioners? I see none. Is the applicant present? If so, if you'll please come forward. Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience in support of this request? Is there anyone in opposition? I have three speaker cards for item C. If you'll come forward.
We're on item B.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're on item B. We're on item B right now.
Okay. My fault. I apologize. So I see no one who wants to speak either for or against it. I'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Now we'll move to item C. Angela?
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 22-26, followed by Jose Benitez, requesting a rezone from General Retail to Two Family Zoning District for lots 1 through 4, Wilmouth addition, located at 810 and 812 South Green Street. And I will go into my staff report. So the applicant is wanting to rezone from General Retail seen on the zoning map to Two Family Zoning District, which is seen here in the yellow. Currently, there is a duplex on each one of these properties, and the owner would like to bring these properties into compliance with the current zoning regulations. Green Street is classified as a collector roadway and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this development is appropriate along these roadways as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions?
Angela, is anything being done on this? Or are they just bringing it in?
They're just bringing it into compliance. It currently is two duplexes. I believe they're wanting, the applicant is here, but I believe they are wanting to keep the duplexes there, renovate them, and rent them out.
Are they just like abandoned right now?
I'm sorry?
Are they just abandoned or empty right now?
I believe they're empty right now. Yeah, they're vacant.
But it wasn't, they weren't instructed out of compliance due to the age, so it's just...
That is correct. Yeah. And so, just to further explain, the zoning ordinance previously before the UDC was adopted allowed duplexes in any zoning district by right. And so when we adopted the UDC in 2021, it did not allow for duplexes or single-family in commercial zoning districts. And so therefore, they fell out of compliance, and so he is wanting to come into compliance.
Okay, is the applicant present? If you'll come forward, please. State your name.
Carmen Torres, and I'm here representing Jose Benitez. So we're just here presenting for the zoning change, and our plan is to just maintain the integrity and look of what the current neighborhood looks like, and like Ms. Angela stated, just bring it up to compliance.
Any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Okay, we see none. Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of this that'd like to come forward and speak?
Good evening. My name is Greg Rayner. I live at number eight Covington, which you put the map back up there, you know, is just about 200 yards from here. And I'm actually here to speak in support of what he's doing. I came with one other neighbor. Covington is a horseshoe-shaped street, and it's very historical, and it was an area where many of the founding individuals of Longview who made lots of decisions about many of the things that we have today lived. So we have a big foundation that we're laying about keeping the integrity of the neighborhood, both on Covington and surrounding streets. So when the public hearing sign went up and we began to do investigation, and planning and zoning staff gave me the information, and I have contacted Mr. Benitez, and we've had a phone conversation, our concern was that he was going to be tearing them down and build something that might not be in character with the neighborhood. When I found out that he is going to maintain just what you see there in the picture, we were very pleased about that. So we, Mr. Brunson lives at number 39, and I live at number eight. We represent a very large group of people that are on surrounding streets, green, even individuals who own four and five rental properties on Young Street that are very particular about how they're maintained, and another individual who lives in Brownwood Place just directly behind this. So we're here to say we support this. We were glad to know that it was changing from a retail, commercial-type environment and going back to a private residential. And he has allayed our concerns about how he's going to redo the driveway, he's taking the concrete out of the front yard, he's going to have all the parking in the back, he tends to do landscaping in the front, refencing, maintain the integrity of the historical nature of the house. So here in support of what he's about to do.
Any of the commissioners have any question, Mr. Rehner? Thank you, sir. Anyone else that'd like to speak in favor of this proposal? Are there any that would like to speak in opposition to this request? If so, if you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the staff. I see none. Any additional questions or comments? I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, we will go to item D. Angela?
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 22-27, filed by Mark Bedgood, requesting a rezone from Single Family 4 to Single Family 6 zoning district for approximately 7.33 acres of abstract 4 IC Skiller &amp; Survey tract 12, Section 4, situated on the west side of HG Mosley Parkway, north of West Marshall Avenue. The applicant is requesting a rezone from SF 4 to SF 6 zoning district located on HG Mosley Parkway. HG Mosley Parkway is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the City of Longview. This development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map or comprehensive plan and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Angela?
Angela, big picture, what are the difference in SFR and SF 6?
So SF 4 does require a 7,500 square foot lot. SF 6 allows for a 4,000 square foot lot.
How are they going to access the property? Is it going to be off Rambling Drive or is it going to be off HG Mosley?
I don't know that yet. I don't believe, I don't know. So the applicant may know that, and we can ask the applicant or his engineer.
Okay. Is the applicant present? If they are, if they'll please come forward, state your name and your address.
My name is Wade Johnson with Johnson &amp; Pace. Our address is 1201 Northwest Loop 281. It's been a long time since I've been here. I used to have brown hair when I first started in front of you guys. Angela, do you have a, the layout?
Y'all didn't provide the layout with the application.
Shame on us. Apologies. Okay. Yeah, let me answer a few questions. We will be required two drives, and we can, we thought the city will probably want one off of Rambling Drive and then one off of Mosley. I think we can get them both off of Mosley, which might address some of the concerns some of the people here have about the property. Don't know that yet. That's going to be a question for engineering, the driveway spacing and the proximity to the roads across the street, across HG Mosley from this property. So we don't know yet, but we might be able to get all the drives, the two entrances on HG Mosley. There's been some concern we've heard about tiny homes. The minimum house size on this lot is 1,000 square feet, so it's a long ways from a tiny home. Tiny homes are 200, 400 square feet. I think the city, we know that we're going to have to connect utilities to the back, down Rambling Drive and to that Rockwall Drive, so that's why we were going to connect our street back there. But that's not, may not be a necessity. We'll just have to see at the time of engineering. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Wade, how many lots and how many houses do you guys plan on putting out there?
I've got to plead the fifth. I don't remember. Some of my other guys were, I got, I was default to come tonight, so I was not, or I had to come. Some other guys were, had other obligations, so I can't tell you. Something on the order of 40 lots, I believe, but I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, that probably, that sounds about right. The future land use map shows low-density residential, which maximum density is about six units per acre, and so they can't exceed that, that minimum or maximum density.
And so, yeah, Angela said SF 4 and SF 6 are both within the low-density residential requirement.
This property's just south of those duplexes, isn't it?
Yes. There are duplexes, and we will have duplexes on the front of ours because it's zoned multifamily. And then these houses, we'll be back behind it, yes.
It's actually, it's a duplex. You see that yellow, Jason, along HG Mosley? So they're leaving that duplex.
Any other question to Mr. Johnson? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Johnson, then.
Let me open the public hearing, please, first. If, if we have no further questions, Mr. Johnson, I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing portion of it. Now, at this point, is there anyone who'd like to speak in support of this request? If so, please come to the mic. All right, anyone who would like to speak in opposition, please come to the mic. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Steve Hemphill. A lot of my neighbors are here, too. I guess they'll cover anything I don't cover, so I'll try to sum it up for you. I've been in Longview 41 years. My wife's a retired teacher. Taught at Hallsville, and then Pine Tree, and then Spring Hill. Some of you know Mary Lynn. My house is, at the, at the square box, it's the top left corner. That's my house. So my backyard goes to that area. And what they didn't say in the rezoning request is it's already zoned for 1,250 square foot homes, and they're asking it to be moved to 1,000. I understood right when I called and asked that question. So, so all the homes around the streets are anywhere from 2,500 runs a little over 3,000 square feet. It just seemed really incongruent to put 1,000 square foot homes. I've had apartments bigger than that crowded in, I guess 40 of them, and that, on top of that, we thought nothing would happen there because there's an oil well, but they informed me they're going to try to plug that. That, or gas well, that gas well blew a few years ago, and Ronald remembers it even better than me. I was out of town some, but it made a terrible noise all day. We were all scared it was going to blow up. So even, and I know there's an ordinance you have to 100 square feet away to build anything, so I called about that first, and they said, "Well, that's going to go away if you plugs it." Well, that doesn't mean nothing bad will happen. So it makes me a little nervous for them to build 40 houses in the middle of it, the white area in the middle is the well that's been there over 40 years. It's been there the whole time I've been here. So that, that was a little concerning. The notice only went out to people within 300 feet of this property. I think if you went to the neighborhood, you have even, this place would be packed with people saying, "Wait a minute, you're going to put these little bitty places right next to all this? The property value is certainly going to be affected for everyone in the area." They acted like it's going to come off Mosley, but whether it comes off Mosley or Rockwall, and there's already a street behind Philip Smith's house, he couldn't make it tonight, but that little street coming into the left and near the top left-hand corner is, is already the gravel road that goes into the oil well. And so I don't know how they'd plug that and stop traffic coming that way. So you'd have, you know, all these very small homes crowded in, and 1,250 is already really small. The approval to 1,000 seems absurd to me, honestly. But one thing I thought, wonder if they'd at least give us a buffer so that the homes in that area would have, maybe we could buy the lots behind us or something to, to give a buffer for the difference in homes that are 2 and 3 and 3,500 square feet versus homes that are 1,000 square feet. So that would possibly help with that, because we realize you're in control and we're just telling you our opinion. But the upper right-hand corner, there's standing water most of the year. And one of our neighbors sitting right here will tell you, if you want him details, he has the house on the right-hand top corner of the black square, and when they put the duplexes facing the street, I mean, it's rotting down his garage. It's a disconnected garage from his home. The water doesn't flow in there properly. So you've got some really big water problems along with if you move forward with this. So those were the concerns we had, and anything I didn't cover well enough, any of you guys, most of these people are my neighbors, and like I say, only people within 300 feet got this notice. I think you'd have a lot fuller house in opposition if it had gone to a little higher, further distance from it. Maybe that's the rule, but we didn't have, I've been out of town two weeks. I'm a Christian author and speaker, and didn't get a chance to really talk to everybody about it. But at least we wanted to come and express our concern that this wasn't a real good idea.
Does anyone have any question, Mr. Hemphill, before we dismiss him?
Is your main opposition just dropping down from the 1,250 to the 1,000 square feet, or that they're building a subdivision right there?
Good question. We just felt like a subdivision should be similar in size to all the homes in the area. We didn't even know till this came out that it was already zoned for 1,250. We think that's too small. We think it should be at least 1,500 or 1,750. Most of the homes are that big or much bigger, all in that area, all up and down to Rockwall, nice homes that some of them over 3,000 square feet. Mine is over 3,000 square feet. We just feel like it should match the neighborhood rather than crabbing, cramming in a bunch of people in some very small homes. I know it's not a tiny home of 200 square feet, but like I said, I've had apartments bigger than 1,000 square feet. I think 1,250 is too small when you're going to hurt the value of all the neighbors. But good question. Thank you for bringing that up. I meant to mention that.
What about the duplexes that have been built right there adjacent?
Since they face HG Mosley, we haven't, I don't see an effect. I don't think that really hurts anything. But when you start having an entrance and coming in and being crowded right up against all the other houses, I think that's the main issue. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in opposition, please? Come to the mic.
Yes, my name is Shane Harold. I live at the 118 property he was referencing on the other far corner of it. I'd like to echo his concerns as well as my last neighborhood, they came in and they did this, and they built several small homes. Homes of that size tend to rapidly degrade into Section 8 housing, which does bring problems in, unfortunately. The other concern I have is with the drainage issue. When they did build that row of duplexes, my yard actually touches the corner of one of those duplexes on Mosley. The guy next door to me who... The guy next door to me, who's no longer there, right after they built them, it flooded butt into his swimming pool. My yard now, if we get even more than a moderate rain, my entire backyard is unusable. I get three to four inches of standing water. It washes down around the fence and goes into the woods immediately behind me and stands there for weeks on end. I'm largely concerned that also building the mass of concrete and runoff, it's going to push it back into my yard and completely flood the yard and then flood into my pool as well.
And have you had any questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition, please come to the mic.
My name is Billy Haganbueker and I live at 124 South Castle. And that's why Wade is, he's an engineer, so he's going to take care of all those problems for us. And he's going to continue to send Ace Glass a check, no matter what I say tonight, I assure you. But, but anyways, I'm, I, you know, I appreciate everything these guys have said here and, and I'm sort of like them. Rockwall's a good old neighborhood, just like Montclair is and Wildwood is. And if nothing else, we need a buffer, you know, and I think 1,250 is, is definitely small enough. I don't see any reason why they can't work with that and give us a buffer. I think that would be, you know, workable for both of us. Having a small business here in town, I'm sort of like Andy Mack. I want, I want us to build within the city. Let's use that seven acres. Let's, let's let them build within the city, but let's work with what we got. We got somebody from Tyler that wants to bring their money over here to Longview. Let's let them do it. But let's, let's work creatively and let's work together and let's work this out. Let's get, let's get Wade to figure out a way to make both entrances off of HG Mosley. Let's give the citizens that we got here a buffer to work with. Let's get Wade a, a way to figure out a way to engineer it so nobody ends up with water in their backyard. And let's keep Rockwall a good neighborhood with lots of trees. And, because you know, the first thing they're going to do is bulldoze all that. We're not going to have any trees. They're not going to go in there and, and pick it out and they're going to go in there and bulldoze it and we're going to end up with a neighborhood like what you got over on, what is it, Malo? Is it that little neighborhood off of Alpine that's being built right now? Help me.
Is that the one, is that Mallow?
Mallow, you know, that's a cute little neighborhood, but there ain't a tree one. You know, uh, you know, look at, over there off Silver Falls that Chris McDade's building on, there ain't no trees over there. Great little neighborhoods, but a whole different attitude, whole different, whole different type neighborhood. Not a tree one. Great first-time homes. And all of them are bigger than 1,250 square foot, too, that Chris is building. Affordable homes. If what you call today is affordable, you know, and I'm not too sure what Mr. Bedgood is calling affordable, but it's hard to do that nowadays. But, but anyways, I think, I think something can be worked out here. I'm not too sure what he's got in mind at this time is workable for the Rockwall community. But I think something is workable and I think we just need to go back to the drawing board and figure something out.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Angela, Michael, are there no, are there no other additional safety or requirement, requirements with the, the gas well? They just go in there and plug that and there's no, in terms of compliance? And without seeing a, without seeing a layout or a replat or whatever you want to call it, where are the streets at and how does that work with that gas well? I don't understand that, but...
Yeah, as, as far as I understand, if they go in there and plug it per, you know, Railroad Commission guidelines and follow all the guidelines, then, you know, the well's not there, it's not operable, then they work around it. You know, if there's well sites there, then the fire code has dimensions as far as how far they have to be. But once they plug it, you know, we have plugged wells all over East Texas. Pipelines everywhere. They'll have to, you know, they'll have to stay off the pipelines and, and maintain those. Those pipelines probably won't go away.
Is it operating now or is it?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Well, I was told that it hasn't, they haven't produced since 2015. I may be wrong, but that's what I was told.
Wade, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Forgive me. I said, we checked the Railroad Commission records, which say that it hasn't operated since 2015. But there may be someone that goes out and checks and checks saltwater and various things on it, but supposedly it's not been, hasn't produced since 2015.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I would say there is large stationery.
Come to the podium, please.
Mike?
I would say that there is large stationary equipment that you hear operating out there periodically. So I assume it is doing something.
Okay, anyone else would like to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone, state your name.
I'm Lonnie Ho. I live at 101 North Castle, just up the street from all these people. And I wouldn't have known about it unless they came and, and told me about it. So my biggest, one of my biggest concern is the Rockwall. If they come in and put a road off of Rockwall on their, into Rockwall, all those kids coming down from Pine Tree High School, that is, that's not fun right now because, you know, they just got through with Fairmont and all the kids were coming down, well, everybody was coming down through the neighborhood. But my biggest concern is the, you put in there and you put 40 houses in there, you're going to have people even coming in there even worse. Even though he said they're going to try to put it coming off HG Mosley, if you think about HG Mosley, it's in that curve right there. If you bring streets out into HG Mosley in that curve right there, you're going to have some major problems. We have enough problems there already at HG Mosley and 80. So you put 40 more houses in there, especially at that size, it's, it's not going to be a good idea.
I will say a couple of things, not to that gentleman, but just in general. You know, we're always have empathy when folks are, you know, taxpayers and I'm, it's no difference in this, it's no different in this situation. And we always try to find common ground to make it workable for everyone. I know if, I lived on Rockwall, I lived at South Castle in that area, I would probably be out there as well against it. I think that, that, and we always say, you know, what's the worst of two evils? And trying to make everyone happy is, is to, to the best of our ability. You know, you guys all know that it's SF4, it's going to, you know, at, at a minimum, that's, that's what will happen will be SF4. And you know, when you, when you live by woods, eventually, especially a town like Longview growing like this, someone's going to buy the woods and they're going to build. You know that. I, I think if I lived there, I, I wouldn't be happy about 1,250 square foot houses, but I would have a problem with 1,000 square foot. So me speaking up here as a commissioner, I, it's not something I'm inclined to support. And I think the worst of two evils is them going back and saying, "Okay, well, we can't do 40, but we can do 30," or whatever. Because you're going to get that, you know that. So that's just my, my two cents.
One more quick, thank you for saying that. It's just that we never knew it was zoned for 1,250. You said, "Well, it's going to be 1,250." I'd like to make a motion, there has to be at least 1,700 or 2,000, just so it matches the, you know, the neighborhood. I appreciate that and at the very least, I think the 1,000 should be declined, but I still have great concerns that it lowers the value of the area when you put, most of them are two or 2,500 or 3,000 square feet and you put much of half that size out there, that's just, I just don't think that's a good choice. They can, they can sell them for more and build some houses the same size as, as what they're in there. And love to have a buffer, but I can't, you know, I can't make that happen either. I just appreciate you saying it shouldn't go to 1,000, but I think it should go above 1,250. And if any of us had known it was at 1,250, we'd probably have been down here saying, asking you to change it then. We just didn't know it till it came up because of this request, but thank you.
They're, they're the ones that get to saying that, but, you know.
All right, we have someone else who'd like to speak in opposition, if you'll come forward, please.
Mr. Moon, I'm not speaking in opposition, I'm sitting in offense. We own property, my wife and I, is 17 Rockwall Drive. We have the northwest corner, which it don't affect us as much as it does our neighbors. Our concern was the, how they were going to have access to that piece of property. I appreciate the ideal entry and exit being off HG Mosley, since that's part of their development, part of their duplexes, rather than over on Rockwall or on Ben Brook. So that's what we have to say. Thank you, Commissioner.
Questions of Mr. Low?
I've got a good buddy sold a house off of Rockwall probably six months ago and, and I can say firsthand, just with the little traffic that they have, that's, that's not a good road to have that many houses coming onto. So I, you know, and I say that as a citizen as well, you know, that I, I would not want that kind of traffic coming out on Rockwall. That's a little bitty road with a curve in it, so...
Well, we, we like the idea of it being zoned for larger houses. We like the idea of the piece of property being developed. I'm sure our neighbors have more input on that than really what we do because we're, we're kind of away from the piece of property that's being zoned. But our, our interest is, is how they make entry and exit. In reference to the well, we have a service person that checks on it about three times a week. And we have 18-wheelers that will come and go from it about twice a month. I don't know if it's saltwater or what they're removing, but we do have the traffic of 18-wheelers in and out at this time. So I'm not sure if it's still being used or not. Yes, that's my opinion.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Mr. Low?
Thank you, and of course, at the risk of being redundant, which I'm sure I will be, but I grew up here. I grew up in the neighborhood, so I was probably in, within 50 yards. And of course, gentleman back here actually lives in Dr. Lanigan's house. He was our superintendent of school. So, you know, for me, Rockwall is, we call it Bazell Acres, is how we used to call it. So it is historic for me, it's personal for me. I live on 121 South Castle. My name is Ronald Low, in case I didn't say that. And I like the idea, I appreciate the thought of going only into Mosley. The track team and the, the children from the school jog up and down Rockwall. You throw 40 houses and let it be entering where that old road is, that's a, that's a lot of traffic. 40 people coming in and out onto Rockwall, I think would be disastrous, dangerous for the kids, for people, for us coming in and out of our drives. So I think that's a big deal. I was, I've lived in the house on, at 121 for 35 years. So I've been there for a long time and the, it was essentially an explosion. That gas well blew. And if anybody's ever heard that, it's pretty disconcerting. And it was full, it sounded like a jet engine for a day and a half while they were trying to, to cap it. So certainly I would love to make sure that they adhere to the promise of totally eradicating that because that could be a lot of people that could be at, at high risk. So again, the size of the homes going down to 1,000, I think that is, you know, not a, not a wise thing because it's going to just add too many people. So, thank you.
Have any questions, Mr. Low? Anyone else like to speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and your address.
My name is Karen Rawls and I live at 17 Rockwall Drive and I've lived there since 1972. So I have gone through the castle gate, whatever that little subdivision back there is, that was fine. You know, we didn't have any problems when they were building that subdivision or right before they were building it, we had a rapist loose in our neighborhood. So, you know, it was kind of nice that that subdivision came. And they're nice houses, just like they were talking about on the street that faces Rockwall. They're comparable, they're nice, some of them are even better. Then you go put up the little gated community, which, you know, not real impressed with it, but then you go put these duplexes up that face HG Mosley. You know, you don't live in the neighborhood and you don't see the type of people that are being let to be rent or renting them. Does this person that does the duplexes, do they really keep them up? I mean, it is devaluing everything in that area. And that area has been good and better since I lived there, okay? So I think these 1,000 square foot homes is just horrific. I mean, horrific. You expect somebody to live in that. And I think that, you know, you're, y'all are going to do what you're going to do anyways. But I don't know how much of a buffer is going to help. These houses need to be in line with what's already there. This area is still a nice sought-after neighborhood for people to want to move into. So by the time when I want to resell my house, I want to be able to recoup what I need. And I just cannot imagine putting 1,000 square foot homes there. You know, in the duplexes, people move in and out, they leave their animals. We have lots of stray animals. The, the neighbor here that's behind this one, these two, their, their houses are right there. The little woods that come where you're talking about the street, when people move out of these duplexes, they just leave their animals. So, you know, that's just something y'all need to talk about and think about. I know you need growth, but you need the right kind of growth. And he is correct, those kids have been running in that neighborhood since 1972. Let me tell you, you can't add any more traffic on there. It's bad enough now. I mean, I understand you might need affordable housing in Pine Tree areas, but this may not be the area you really want.
Thank you. Any other additional questions or comments?
I have something to say. I'm actually a neighbor as well. I live on Preston Drive. I've lived there for 17 and a half years. And I actually sold a house not too long ago on Rockwall. The houses, the square footage that you're talking about, they are closer to Pine Tree. I was one of the kids marching, practicing marching in that neighborhood back in the day. Closer to the, closer to Highway 80 and Rockwall, they have less, the houses are less square footage than where you guys are talking right now, where High Ridge is at. Since I've lived in that area for so long, I was concerned about the duplexes going in on HG Mosley as well because I was concerned about the traffic. But I, in 17 and a half years, and I take my kid to the junior high every morning, I haven't had any issues with the traffic. I would be concerned with both outlets on HG Mosley because a second one would be so close to the light and that, that hill might be blinded. But on both areas, if you look at both sides of the street, closer to Highway 80 and Rockwall, which that plat is, and across the street, half of that neighborhood across the street is duplexes and then on down is apartments. So I, I understand where you're coming from, but it's not outside of the norm for that area. So I do appreciate everybody's comments. Well, and actually, did Wade say that they were for sure building 1,000 square foot homes?
No.
Okay.
I think my voice carries, maybe it doesn't so well. No, the developer does not.
No, the developer does not know, they will be a thousand plus. We don't know the size, exact size yet. And taking the two drives on to Mosley, I mean, that's going to be a decision between us and the engineering staff. We don't know if we can. Rambling Drive was intended, obviously was intended to be extended to, at some point in time when it was built. So, we would just, and there's a sewer line, sewer and maybe water both are going across the property where Rambling was extended, was intended to be extended. So, it's been that way for, for years, obviously.
So, Wade, on, on the decision or the request to go from SF four to SF six, is that more about the square footage of the house or the square footage of the lot to be able to put more lots? Do you know?
It's more about the density, actually. You know, the cold hard fact is that the construction cost, as you well know, of the houses is high, but the construction cost, more importantly, of the roads is what is so high. So, we've got to get as many houses as we can per road with, and stay within the zoning district. So, that's the purpose. Going from SF four to six is, it takes probably fifteen, maybe twenty percent of the density away.
But regardless of what, what you say, it opens up the possibility they could do that. And that's, I mean, that's not a question I'm asking, that is a fact. But if, if it goes to SF six, they could do a thousand-square-foot homes.
They could do a thousand-square-foot homes, yes.
I called him, you said he was. I called, talked to him. You said we're asking for a thousand-square-foot homes.
He's right there, you can ask him.
That's what he told me on the phone.
Okay. No, he hasn't told me that.
That'd be the problem I would have with it.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to see, I mean, I just need more information. Me personally, I'd like to see pre, pre-development plan, you know, what those roads look like, what those lots look like, but, you know. I advocate growth, though, I do, you know.
We want the home to grow and be built too. But if I had those woods behind my house, and I lived in, like Natasha, you were talking about the houses, the, the specific house my buddy lives in is right off of, of eighty that they sold, two, basically two houses up on Rockwall from the plumber, but I don't remember what it is now, what it used to be. And it was a twenty-eight-hundred-square-foot house. And next door, at least fifteen-hundred. I mean, I, I know there's a couple smaller, but when we say smaller, we're talking fifteen-hundred. There's not, I don't even think there's, on Rockwall's a twelve-hundred-fifty-square-foot house I can think of. Any of those.
I, I agree with that, but also, we've got to look at transitions, and that's kind of how the map is approached. It's going from, you know, different transitions, and we've got commercial to the south. You've got, you know, multifamily, which are going to be duplex directly to the east of there. You know, I'd love for there to be, you know, twelve, you know, thirty-five-hundred-square-foot houses, but who's going to build a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot house in the corner between multifamily and commercial? I mean, so the transition is how we've always looked at it, you know, going forward. And this is transition from commercial to multifamily, you know, on both corners into the single-family four and single-family three.
Any questions of Wade? Commissioners? Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Hall is still, but what you're saying, they're still, you know, you're talking about those houses. Those houses are, the smaller houses down there, they're fifty years old. They've been there forever. They didn't build houses big back in those days. The rest of the houses in those areas are fifteen, anywhere two thousand, three thousand square-foot homes. And like they were saying also, those pine tree kids, across-country kids use Rockwall all the time. But, but the little houses she's talking about, they're, in the house you're talking about, there's very, I bet there's not a handful in there that, that, that are at that size, square footage. They're small rock houses and wood frame houses and stuff like that. They're not even brick houses.
Well, and directly across the street, there isn't more than, most houses are not more than fifteen-hundred square feet. So, looking as a, at a realtor perspective, if I were to do comps, I would go back and forth between those neighborhoods.
Well, that's, I mean, that's a big difference, twenty, fifteen-hundred-square-foot house and a thousand-square-foot house.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Any other, any other comments or questions?
Angela, what is the lot size difference between SF four and SF six?
SF six allows a four-thousand-square-foot lot size, and SF four is seven-thousand-five-hundred square feet.
Any additional questions or comments? I see none, so I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll now entertain a motion.
I move. Second.
What, what was the motion? Please state it, for everybody in here. Did you close the?
We need a motion to approve.
I thought you were closing the stuff.
I, I closed the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I need a motion to either approve or deny.
I move, do we approve?
And I second.
Your motion is what, sir?
Move that we approve.
Have a motion to approve.
I second.
Have a second. All in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed? It fails. Motion fails. Angela, did you get it all?
I think we did.
Okay. All right, regular agenda item E. Angela?
Yes, sir. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-two dash twenty-eight, filed by Angel Montsevias, requesting a rezone from heavy commercial to single-family five zoning district for approximately eighteen-point-three-three-seven acres of abstract two, AR Johnson survey tract five, section four, situated on the west side of Estes Parkway, north of Wingate Lane, located at twenty-seven-oh-one Estes Parkway. So, the applicant is requesting to rezone this property. Currently, it is zoned heavy commercial. The applicant is wanting to build a residential, single-family residential subdivision, so he is requesting to rezone to SF five. Currently, there is some SF five zoning directly to the south on Wingate Lane. Estes Parkway is classified as a principal arterial roadway and is maintained by the city of Longview. This type of use is appropriate as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses, therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. Be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions at this point? Is the applicant present? If you are, please come to the microphone, state your name and your address.
My name is Ricardo Carvajal, I'm living in four-twenty-eight South Center Street. I can even represent Mr. Montsevias. We're planning to do a subdivision on the property. That's the only thing I have. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
I'm, I'm sorry, I did, I couldn't hear what you said.
He just asked if you had any questions, if you all have any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Here are none at this point. I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of the request? If there are, please come forward, state your name and address.
I'm sorry, maybe I missed. I did have a question. My name is Timberly Hall, and I live at two-twenty Nimitz Street, which is directly in front of that eighteen acres. And I guess my concern would be what they would be building there and how close it would be to my property.
Any questions?
Where's, where's her?
He's going to come forward, I think, answer a question.
Where's Nimitz? Where is that? In front of?
Nimitz is directly to the north.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And so, it's, it's hard to see this map.
She's right, she's right up there. Go back to.
Yeah. So, you see, Nimitz is directly to the north, yeah.
She's that little square right there.
Mm-hmm. Nope, the one right there, yeah, there you go.
Yep.
Single-family homes, so we'll make a neighborhood around there. It's going to be close, our neighborhood, we try to do gated if we can. But it's going to be a house. What size? It's class of five, so I'm not really sure.
SF, SF five has a minimum eight-hundred square feet. So, that's, that's just a minimum. They can always exceed that, but they just can't go below it.
So, so you don't know how many houses you're going to do as of yet?
Not yet, because we, first, we want to know if we want to be approval before we keep going, you know, put more, invest more money in the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, my question is, I'm also a real estate agent, and I know that the property is on the market for sale. Is it no longer on the market for sale? Or is this being done for the potential buyer?
As far as we know, I mean, the property has been on the market for over a year or more. We don't got any people who's interested, and people who tried to buy it, you know, they tried to buy it for too little, less than the value. So, that's the problem. If they try to pay, you know, half of the price, you're not going to sell it.
Anyone else like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir?
My name's Carl Keenan, and I actually live in Kilgore. I'm here on behalf of Kamatsu, who owned pretty much everything to the west of this property. And we own the lot next to, to where they live, also where our engineering building is. The concerns we have is our future growth. If there's a small, small home residential area right there on Estes Parkway would back up against all of our property, that's, we just went through all the process of getting approval to abandon Bradley, Arnold, and MacArthur Streets in that area. We just finally purchased the last lot that was not ours in that area. We did that so we would have room to grow our business as the market allows our business to grow, to add structures on that side of the property. So, our concerns would be, you know, ten years from now, five years from now, we're building something, are we going to start getting huge noise complaints causing an issue with local residents in that area? Of what we're doing, obviously, it's not legal, but it's just, you know, we build heavy commercial equipment. And that's primary for us to either have a R and D facility, a testing facility for our loaders and our small underground equipment. So, more of it is kind of what their question was. SF five was an eight-hundred-square-foot house, how big can the, or how small are the lots?
Quick, I believe it's five thousand.
Five thousand square-foot lot. So, I mean, obviously, that's, you know, it's eighteen acres, that's quite a few lots in there, taken out for streets and utilities. I guess you answered the question, you're asking for it because you haven't been able to sell it. You're thinking of developing yourselves as the property owner.
Okay.
Can you please come to the microphone? Thank you.
Also, we don't really want to build everything for now. We're trying to, to lift, and as you see the picture, and you raise a hand, back there, we try to do like a little park or something, you know, leave a little something for the community. We don't try to like knock everything out, we try to, to build something, you know, like a little area.
So, the west side would be more of a community park for the subdivision?
Yeah, so, but like I said, right now, till we don't have approval, we don't know yet.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I had.
Any additional questions or comments? Anyone else like to speak either for or against the request? If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? Motion passes. Regular agenda item F.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z twenty-two dash twenty-nine, filed by Robert Wallen, requesting a rezone from single-family four and general retail to single-family six zoning district for approximately seven-point-four-nine-six acres of abstract two sixty-two, a Jordan survey tract twenty and twenty-one dash oh-eight, section two, located on the northwest corner of Eden Drive and Alpine Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property from single-family four and general retail zoning district to single-family six, located here at this northeast corner of Eden Drive and Alpine Road. Eden Drive is classified as a minor arterial roadway and is maintained by the city of Longview. This type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and comprehensive plan. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any of the commissioners have any question of Angela? If the applicant present, if the applicant's present, please come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Rob Wallen, I live at thirteen-ten Heather Lane. And as she stated, we, we have the plot. I guess you can see, we have put a plan together for twenty-four lots, and the lot sizes are about five thousand square feet. And we have extended the property about twenty-six feet into the commercial property to make the lots a little deeper. And we have discussed or had open conversations about donating that property, or the commercial property to the city for a park. We haven't finalized that yet, but that's part of the discussion that Angela and our engineering department had, had talked about. So, I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Anyone have any questions?
What is the square footage on the SF six?
Oh, SF six is just like the previous one, so minimum lot size, four thousand square feet, minimum house size, one thousand square feet.
You say you're going to donate part of the property as part of a park or something?
Well, see, the, the zone, most of this property, the commercial property is in a flood zone. So, there's not much left to actually do commercially. So, when we were doing the initial plot, we were just going to use the residential property or, and not even go into the commercial, but.
So, the shaded area would be considered flood plain, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thanks, sir. I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of the request? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the request? If so, please come forward at this time. If there's no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion to approve. Did I hear a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It does pass by unanimous action. We're now to item G of the regular agenda. Angela?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application PD twenty-two dash oh-three, filed by the Saxon Group LLC, requesting a rezone of approximately point-seven-three-zero acres of abstract two fifty-eight, PP Rain survey tract twenty-eight, section six, from plan development eight to a plan development for a restaurant with a drive-through window located at twenty-five forty-one Judson Road. So, the applicant is requesting a rezone to amend PD eight to allow for a restaurant with a drive-through window located here at twenty-five forty-one Judson Road, which is a little south of the corner of the intersection of Judson and Loop two eighty-one. This area was annexed into the city in nineteen seventy and was rezoned for a plan development for retail uses. As this tract developed with additional buildings, you know, they have to come back and amend the PD and come back to Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for final approval. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximately thirty-six-hundred-square-foot restaurant with a drive-through window. The site will follow general retail zoning regulations such as setbacks and heights. The site will follow general retail zoning regulations such as setbacks and heights, height, and they will share a sign with the overall site and will not have any additional signage on site. All landscape and parking will meet the minimum requirements set forth in our UDC. Judson Road is classified as a principal arterial roadway and this type of development is allowed along, is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and comprehensive plan and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Angela? Yes, sir?
I have one regarding what exists there today?
What's existing there today is a parking lot, yeah.
So they're taking the parking lot there?
That is correct. So you see the green outline, it's just all parking lot.
Got you, okay, I'm thinking it's one block down, nevermind, that makes sense, okay.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions of Angela? Is the applicant present? If so, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Hi, my name is David Welty and I work for the Saxon Group at two two eight eight Monitor Street in Dallas.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about it?
It's a restaurant with a drive-through.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Second and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, say no. Pass it unanimous. Okay, moving right on, I think that's the end of that, but we will have a staff update.
Yes, sir. So five of the six zoning items did go before plant, City Council, Oakland Heights Baptist Church, the actual church location to the east of Judson Road, they withdrew that request, but the item on the west side went forward, but all of the items were approved by City Council.
Thank you. Any questions of Angela on this? If not, that concludes today's meeting and we are adjourned.